Good evening, everybody. This is the Commissioner meeting of November 2nd, 2022 at 6:00 PM here at Sussex County Community College's Performing Arts Center in Newton, New Jersey. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask Christina to please call the roll.
Deputy Director Carney.
Here.
Commissioner Fantasia.
Here.
Director Fasano.
Here.
Commissioner Space.
Here.
Commissioner Yardley.
Commissioner Yardley is absent this evening. Before we get started, I'd like to ask if you can please rise with us for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on October 19th, 2022, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street in Newton, New Jersey, to the following: The New Jersey Herald, The Star-Ledger, WSUS Radio, and WNNJ Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, we'd like to remind you to please mute all electronic devices. Item 5 on our agenda is the approval of our agenda tonight. Do we have a motion to approve?
Still move.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. Item 6 on our agenda, we do have an important proclamation tonight. It's going to be read by Jill Space, and it's our salute to veterans, where we have Lorraine Hens, our Director of Senior Services, along with Faith Boden and Patty Green, members of the Sussex County Veterans Committee here as well. You're more than welcome to come on up, and I'll have Commissioner Space read the proclamation into the record.
Whereas the greatest acknowledgement of our freedom is to honor our armed forces veterans who have sacrificed and in many instances paid the ultimate price for our freedom. And whereas Sussex County is home to thousands of veterans who have stepped forward to defend our country and preserve our way of life, and whereas we salute the soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, Coast Guard Guardsmen, who have rendered the highest service any American can offer, and we rededicate ourselves to fulfilling our commitment to all those who served, and whereas these heroes served faithfully, humbly, and valiantly in times of war and peace, and now carry these admirable traits as leaders of our communities, whose character reflects our enduring American spirit, setting examples of inspiration and strength, and whereas the people of Sussex County greatly appreciate the selfless and personal sacrifices of our past veterans and those currently serving our country, both on home and foreign soils. And whereas honoring our veterans encourages all of us to be more appreciative of the many freedoms we possess as Americans, and the price that is being paid each day to allow us to enjoy those freedoms now and for generations to come. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim Sunday, November 6, 2022, as the 22nd Annual Salute to Military Veterans, and a day to salute every veteran of this county, paying special tribute to the veterans, their families, and neighbors and friends, celebrating together today, enjoying the glorious freedom of the United States of America, and remembering in a special way those who are risking their lives abroad to make a better America for all. By order of the Board of County Commissioners, Anthony Fasano, Commissioner Director, Chris Carney, Deputy Commissioner, Dawn Fantasia, Jill Space, and Herb Yardley, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Yes. I just wanted to add too that Mr. Bill Robinson here is representing the state of New Jersey, helping out our VA and our veterans. I just want to say thank you so much to the county. You guys have supported our group for many, many years, and you've given us so much support and resources in order to honor our veterans, which is, I think, the most important thing we can do right now. So, thank you so much again.
Thank you.
I just wanted to recognize our committee that diligently works on all of the activities we're able to do for our veterans, whether it's doing the parade that we've done for 22 years, it's whether we're the Veterans Picnic that we do in August, our Veterans Appreciation Luncheon that we have done this April and added to one more event that we can to honor our veterans and support everything that they have given in their time of service, their family members and our community, as well as everything they've done after their service has ended. One thing I have to say is working with the veterans, it's an amazing, humbling experience that I've had the luxury of doing over the past 12 years, and knowing how committed they all are to our community and everything they give every day. So, doing those few events really brings pride to us of what we can give back to them. And just want to say thank you for all of your support, thank our committee for all of their diligent work, and everything that goes into putting these events together, because there's a lot that goes into it. So, county couldn't do it without all of them. So, thank you, thank you everyone, and thank you commissioners, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 7 on our agenda, there is no public hearing this evening. Item 8 is our first public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and maintain a six-feet social distance with other attendees, and when you arrive, state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for public comment this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion carries, and the floor is open for our first public comment session regarding agenda items only. Is there anybody who wishes to be heard? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the floor for public comment this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. Item 9, our commissioner comments, and as always, we'll start to my left with Commissioner Space.
Thank you. On, well, what we just talked about with the proclamation, on Sunday, the Division of Senior Services 22nd Annual Salute to Military Veterans will host the 22nd Annual Salute to Military Veterans at the Sussex County Fairgrounds, located on Plains Road in Augusta, at 1:00 PM on Sunday, November 6. The program will consist of a parade that will highlight veterans of all branches of the service, military, vehicles, civic groups, community bands, and local high school bands. This tribute to our military veterans allows Sussex County to publicly recognize the contributions and sacrifices our veterans and their families have made for our country. For additional information about this event, please call the Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, Extension 1221, or email seniorservices@sussex nj.us. I looked at the weather for Sunday, and it looks like it's going to be 72 degrees. So, that's a record-breaker, they were saying on the news today, so that should be a good day for the veterans thing. The Division of Community and Youth Services opioid settlement funds. The opioid crisis has had a devastating effect on so many families in New Jersey and in Sussex County. On December 8th, 2021, the Board of County Commissioners authorized the County of Sussex to participate in the nationwide opioid settlement agreement, seeking damages against opioid manufacturers, distributors, and retailers. A settlement was reached through the negotiation process, and a formula has been established to determine the amount each entity will receive. Sussex County's share of the settlement is a minimum of $127,917.37 per year for the next 18 years. To remedy and lessen the impacts of the opioid crisis for our residents, Sussex County recently created a council with key stakeholders to identify priorities and develop a plan to fund lifesaving addiction prevention, treatment, and/or recovery programs. And on that note, two weeks ago, Mr. Tappin, Christina Marks, our confidential aide, and I recently met with Becky Carlson, the Executive Director at the Center for Prevention and Counseling, and toured their facility right here in Newton. She explained the different coalitions that serve Sussex County. One is via Zoom, and it's the second Friday of every month. And in the Vernon area and surrounding areas of Vernon, the coalition is, it meets on 6:00 PM, the second Wednesday of each month. And then there's also a Wallkill Valley Coalition that meets 6:00 PM on the first Wednesday. Check out centerforprevention.org for more information. And our final question to her that day was, we asked her what she sees the biggest challenge in the near future, and she said it was the legalization of marijuana. So, that will be interesting to see how that pans out for the county in the coming years. Christina and I also had the opportunity yesterday to tour Ginny's house. Ginny's house assists the Prosecutor's Office and Division of Child Protection and Permanency with forensic interviews in a comforting manner. They are funded through grants. They have a new therapy dog named Huey, and he was there while we toured, and he was very friendly. When asked what the community could do best to help, she said support their fundraisers, and like and share their Facebook page to bring awareness to all they have to offer the young victims of child sexual assault. And on another note, the budget. In the last few weeks, Commissioner Carney, myself, Christina Marks, Ron Tappin, and our CFO, Elka Yeder, met with the various department heads, division heads, and constitutional officers, all in separate meetings to discuss the operating budget requests for the next year. The hard work is now in front of us to see what is needed to maintain the county's goals while taking care of our employees and maintaining our infrastructure while staying as fiscally conservative as we can. Costs are rising for everything due to inflation, supply and demand, and that will be taken into serious consideration as we work to keep the budget as low as possible to protect the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Space. Commissioner Fantasia.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by sharing that myself and Commissioner Carney attended on Wednesday, October 29th, Daisy's Candlelight Vigil, remembering victims of domestic violence and also celebrating the success of survivors of domestic violence. They had a beautiful vigil at the college, there were speakers, there were survivors, there were speeches by law enforcement, and board members of Daisy, and they definitely shared some staggering statistics. There was a sharp increase in domestic violence incidents during the pandemic. You know, just generally speaking, 10 million adults will experience domestic violence in the United States annually. In 2018, 20% of all violent crimes were incidents of partner violence, and there was 8.1% increase in domestic violence incidents as a result of the lockdown during the COVID pandemic. So, again, we were grateful and honestly humbled to be there. The commissioners did declare October Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we're proud that there are organizations such as Daisy that do serve the most vulnerable populations in our county. I'd like to continue with the update from the Health Department. The Sussex County Division of Health is offering flu and high-dose flu vaccines along with COVID-19 vaccinations, should you wish. The clinics are being held on the following dates: at the Montague Municipal Building, 275 Clove Road in Montague, on Saturday, November 5th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and then at the Franklin Senior Center on Cork Hill Road in Franklin, on Wednesday, November 9th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. So, you're aware COVID-19 vaccines are available no-cost walk-in, and appointments are required to receive the flu or the high-dose flu vaccine. You can visit our website, sussex nj.us, to complete your consent form and schedule your appointment. And as always, our public health nursing continues homebound vaccination. We continue to offer free-at-home COVID-19 test kits through Vault Medical Services and LabCorp. Again, you can find those on our website, they are sent to your address for free. So, the most recent New Jersey Department of Health COVID-19 Activity Level Report says that our county is coded yellow, which is at a medium level. We're reporting nearly 100% Omicron, which tends to present as a milder form of the original virus and the Delta variant. We have, as far as hospitalizations, 75 in the month of October. So, again, to learn more, please visit our website for any support you may need in alignment with that. Also, flu season has gotten an early start. I see it myself, being around school-aged children in school districts, so please keep an eye, maintain your proper handwashing regimen, et cetera, because it appears cold and flu season is upon us, even though the weather is unusually warm, which none of us mind, but I don't think it's helping the germ situation at all. I would like to share with you just a very, very brief update from our CFO regarding our financials. We did receive our financial report update. Revenue numbers are higher than the budget in most areas, and overall expenditures are above 75%, as many of the larger categories, such as debt service, pension, workers' comp, liability insurance, and school obligations are encumbered or close to 100%. So, on November 19th, Commissioner Yardley and I, we are the commissioners assigned to the Capital Budget Committee, so we have a six-hour meeting scheduled that typically follows the traditional budget meeting, so we're looking forward to digging into that and bringing back our findings from the departments to the entire board here. And thank you again to Commissioners Carney and Space for participating in the standard budget hearings. I'd like to share just a little bit with you from the Sussex County Arts and Heritage Council. There are November workshops, a whole series, and again, we have had quite a revival at the Arts and Heritage Council, so many activities if you tend to be artistic or even are interested in learning. There is a Beginning Pastel Workshop on November 4th, there's a Wine Glass Etching Workshop on November 12th, there is Exploring Alcohol Inks Workshop that you can register for, and most of these include the supplies that you will need with the fee. There is a Paint and Sip in cooperation with Artstitution, and that is November 18th, that's a Friday night. And we also have the annual fundraiser, is there, Gala? It is the Roaring 20s Gala Extraordinaire. It's a dinner, dance, and auction on December 9th at the Lafayette House. So, you can get your tickets now. Please visit the Arts and Heritage Council website, or you can find them on Facebook, they're very good at updating their social media, if you are interested in participating in that. Now, a couple more points here. I wanted to share with you some information out of Trenton, again, being the liaison to District 24. Very important bill was passed just this week that was primarily sponsored by Senator Steve Oraho, and it was co-sponsored primarily also along with Senator Fred Madden, who is a Democrat from District 4. And it would establish the crime of sexual extortion to fight a growing trend of frequently victimizing minors, and it was advanced by the Senate Judiciary Committee. So, the reason being that law enforcement agencies have cited an alarming increase in reports of sexual extortion, or sextortion, is the key term for that, which often victimizes young women, victimizes teenagers, and even children who are targeted by adults online. It's cyberbullying, as classified as Senator Oraho, and the hopes of the bill were to protect the young victims. So, sextortion victims are threatened or coerced into engaging in sexual activity, or they're providing explicit photos and videos to the offenders. And in testimony, it was shared that a 17-year-old boy took his own life due to severe sexual extortion on social media. Now, this bill would be increasing the penalties for sexual extortion to a crime of the third degree, with a penalty of up to five years of imprisonment and $15,000 fine, and if the victim is under the age of 18, or an adult with a developmental disability, the charge would be aggravated sexual extortion, a crime of the second degree, with penalties up to 10 years in prison and $150,000 in fines. So, again, please be vigilant, please keep your eyes open for this. There are many people out there who are exploiting our children, exploiting our teenagers, and oftentimes shame prevents these young people from coming forward and bringing these perpetrators to justice. So, this is a good step in the right direction. I feel like the stronger penalties should serve as a warning to anyone who engages in this egregious behavior. Last but not least, and it's never least, there was an excellent, excellent article that was released on Halloween, actually updated today, from the New Jersey Herald, written by Bruce Scruton, and it states that half a black bear incidence may go unreported, and that New Jersey is missing a serious danger. So, we are no stranger up here to the discussion about the bear crisis here in Sussex County, but it's much more, much more severe than many of us even think. Now, when we encounter a bear or have a damage or nuisance report, if you were to call the DEP hotline for such, it is recorded. Well, local law enforcement, state law enforcement, county law enforcement are not in any way mandated to report these to the DEP. So, we feel that these incidents are severely under-reported, even though we are easily three times the amount of bear nuisance reports. That's not "I saw a bear, how cute," in my backyard. These are actual nuisance reports: home entry, attack on pets, attack on livestock, attempted vehicle entry, these are these types of incidents. So, also, there are multitude of calls received by 911 for bears that are struck by vehicles. You know, part of the issue is New Jersey bears have high reproductive rates, and I'm going to refer to some of the information shared and presented very, very well by Mr. Scruton. The governor has obviously rejected a bear hunt. He's used his executive power to prohibit hunts on state-owned land in 2019 and 2020, and the Fish and Game Council authorized a wildlife hunt, and even an emergency hunt, under a court decision. It's a management strategy. Hunting is a management strategy, part of a comprehensive bear management policy. So, in the dozen hunts that have been allowed in the state of New Jersey, 4,700 bears have been harvested. That had a significant impact to help the control of the bear population. The state's wildlife biologists have stated over and over and over ad nauseam that there is no effective method of birth control for black bears. Black bears traditionally were birthing litters of two cubs. Now, we see four and five cubs. Using the estimated one-year growth in bear population of about 900 per year, it is actually possible that there may be 4,700 bears in New Jersey right now. So, instead of a hunt, our governor promised to add $1.5 million to the state budget for increased education efforts about avoiding black bears and trash, you know, telling us how to handle our trash. So, the DEP has already used some of that $1.5 million. They added law enforcement officers and a civilian employee for education, and thank God, a fair amount of the funding went to complete revamping of the DEP's internet pages devoted to black bears, because that's really helping us here in Sussex County. I don't know if you saw the Wes Milford video of the bear unscrewing the top of the, quote, "bear-resistant" garbage can. So, again, money well spent, Governor Murphy, nicely done from your mansion behind your iron gates. However, we continue to experience this problem in Sussex County. He continues to do absolutely nothing, but please, by all means, check out the flashy website that tells you not to run from bears or climb a tree when they're trying to attack you in your backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fantasia. Deputy Director Carney.
How do you go after that, right? I too want to thank Bruce for that article, that picture, I believe, was taken in my backyard, because I have a major bear problem, even when you go down my street, when there's no garbage in the garbage cans, they're still knocking them down. So, they know what they're doing, the bear. So, anyway, moving on, I'll start with my NJTPA report. This goes back to Lackawanna Cut Railroad. So, the planning staff participated in a virtual meeting hosted by Congressman Cartwright from PA with the Federal Railroad Administration, or the FRA, on September 29th. This meeting was specifically for the purpose of discussing the status of and requirements for the restoration of the passenger rail service between New York City and Scranton, PA, over to Lackawanna Cut in Sussex and Warren Counties, as proposed by Amtrak and the recently released 15-year capital plan. This meeting, which was supported by Congressman Gottheimer and Congresswoman Sherrill, including participation of Amtrak officials, as well as representatives from New Jersey Transit and Penda. The FRA updating meeting participants and coalition members on the current status of the FRA's federal-state partnership with intercity passenger rail program, which was funded by the bipartisan infrastructure law, aka the bill, and will be key for the restoration of the rail corridor. The FRA officials also informed participants of the timeline for the submission of the full proposals to FRA and what information will need to be included in the proposals. Amtrak officials also informed coalition members of what Amtrak's role will be with this process. The New Jersey Transit and Penda officials agreed to be in coordination in developing the proposal for this corridor. Transportation planning staff strongly recommends that planning staff from both Sussex and Warren County, as well as the Northwest PA Regional Rail Authority be involved in these meetings, so as to be informed as to progress of the development. So, like, I like to get things done, we're moving along. It's a major, major on-take that we're, that they're doing here, I think it was $16 million they were up to, last time I checked. So, guide rail upgrades, project update notice. The project consists, this particular project consists of the removal and replacement of damaged and/or substandard guide rail along County Route 605, 631, and 655. The proposed guide rail systems will be replaced in new galvanized steel beam guide rail in conformance with current NJDOT standards. Guide rail upgrades, repairs may be conducted in other locations as scheduling, funds, weather, et cetera permits. This particular project is $1.6 million. Design efforts are ongoing for County Route 605, 655, and miscellaneous locations. Construction along 631 will commence on November 7th, depending on weather, of course. And I just want to pick up where Dawn left off with Daisy. You know, I was actually having some lunch the other day at a local place by my house, and a guy was complaining about his taxes, and the county does nothing for him. So, obviously, that bothered me a little bit, and he said all they do is plow my roads, and they usually screw up the curb at the same time. So, I said to him, I said, "Well, you're lucky you don't need the services that we provide, because you would be, you know, you wouldn't be as well-off as you are." And he didn't understand what I meant, so I kind of went into a couple things, but he was a little hard-headed. But, you know, people don't realize what the county provides at all, until you need it. And again, if you do need something like Daisy, then life is not very good. So, kudos to people who work there and volunteer their time, it's a very, very good program, and I was happy to be at that with Commissioner Fantasia. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Carney, and thanks to Commissioner Space and Commissioner Fantasia for your reports as well. I chuckle every time, it's a very serious problem, what's going on with bears, but the reports of what's been reported really is not a reflection at all of what's actually happening on the ground, and I think a better reflection of what's happening on the ground is buying yourself a Ring app. is buying yourself a Ring app, subscribing for community alerts, and realizing that all day, every day, it goes off with bear sightings, more so than anything. So when we hear of, you know, fifty reports, that doesn't include what's been reported to law enforcement, it really doesn't, that means nothing. There is quite a significant amount of bears in our area, as we know. We don't need a report to indicate that to us. We see it every single day, and it is a threat that needs to be taken more seriously. I agree with everything Commissioner Fantasia stated. I will keep my report brief tonight. I wanted to start by sharing that the Commissioner Board will begin to have its regular meetings back at our regular Commissioner Meeting Room at our county office up the street, hopefully starting at our next meeting. I want to thank Sussex County Community College for allowing us to have our meetings here over the last many months. It is incredibly appreciated. Speaking of Sussex County Community College, I was able to be part of a meeting between Dr. Connolly and members of the Board of Trustees for our quarterly update meeting where I heard quite an in-depth report of what SCCC is doing now and what it will be doing in the future to keep it as a quality academic institution for Sussex County students. Sussex County Community is one of the very few community colleges to actually report an enrollment increase, which is no small feat during this time. I reiterated my thankfulness for Sussex County Community College for prioritizing technical education at a time where demand couldn't be much higher for it, but also at a time where many public schools in Sussex County can't afford to provide it due to state aid cuts thanks to Governor Murphy. Our future local economy will be thankful to have Sussex County Community College and its commitment to provide technical education because we all know how important those skills are becoming in today's tight labor market. Sussex County Community College provides for our communities in a number of big ways and a number of small ways, too. And one example is Sussex County Community College making their open computer lab available to Sussex County seniors who may have questions about their cell phones, their iPads, or their computers. The lab has students who are well-versed in this technology, and it's available Mondays from one to four, Tuesdays from nine to four, Wednesdays from nine to three, and Thursdays from ten to four, all right here at Sussex County Community College's Library Science Building, and it's completely free. You just come with your questions, and we have excellent students here who are ready to help with that. If you have any questions about this program, please contact nine-seven-three-five-seven-nine-zero-five-five-five-five. Additionally, we continue to make considerable progress with Sussex County Small Business Assistance Program, which is almost ready for primetime, right, Ron? And I expect it to launch this month, and of course, we will be providing details on that as soon as we have them. We've been working hand-in-hand with the Chamber of Commerce as well on this program. I'm really excited, not only about its impact, but also its timing. I also wanted to note that many local employers are hiring, and that also includes us, the County of Sussex, as we have many open employment opportunities available in Sussex County's government, and we would love to have you join our team in advancing Sussex County for all. You can find more details about our job openings right here on our website's homepage. And finally, Election Day is coming up this Tuesday, and early voting is here. Early in-person voting is available to all Sussex County voters from Saturday, October twenty-ninth to Sunday, November sixth, Monday through Saturday, ten AM to eight PM, and Sunday, ten AM to six PM. There are three designated vote centers available to all Sussex County voters at the Sussex Wantage Library in Wantage, the Cochran House here in Newton, and the Louise Child's Library in Stanhope. If you choose to vote early, please note you'll be voting on the same machines used on Election Day, and for more info on Election Day and how to vote, please reach out to the Sussex County Clerk Office or visit sussexcountyclerk.com. No matter what, please make sure to vote in this upcoming election. With that, that concludes my comments for this evening. We'll move on to item ten on our agenda, which is the approval of our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion carries. Item eleven is the approval of our minutes from regular and executive session on October twelfth. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion?
Yes, I just would like to note in the minutes, each meeting, I request a full update from the Health Department with very specific numbers of COVID cases since the inception of COVID from our very first case and whatnot, and they list that information for me, and then I present to the public. I obviously don't read through pages of the document at every public meeting, but I have asked that the full information is put in the minutes should anybody refer to it, so I just want to make note that I pull the highlights from the COVID information and the statistics where we're at, but for very, very detailed information, I've asked that the full detailed numbers are put into the minutes. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion carries. Item twelve, we have an appointment and designating Christina as our Clerk pro temp through the end of the year. Do we have a motion to adopt Resolutions A and B?
So moved.
Commissioner Space moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion?
I just wanted to thank both John Downus and Christina Marks for stepping up. I appreciate that. We're needing, obviously, we need these people. We have boards. Anybody else out there who's looking to get on a board? We have lots of openings, so please come and help the county out, but thank you for your participation.
Any other comments? And Christina, can you please call the roll for this vote?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Commissioner, Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Item carries. Item thirteen is our resolutions portion. Is there a motion for items thirteen A through N? Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion?
I actually do have something. If we could ask perhaps, Ron, would you be able to just clarify, because I know it's had different iterations? Are telework policies set forth that it still does allow for individuals to telework if indicated and approved? Am I correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just short up some of the information for the preapproval process and those types of things, but yes, absolutely.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other discussion for our resolutions? Hearing none. Christina, can you please call the roll? This is for thirteen A through N.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Item carries. Item fourteen is our awards of contract change orders and bids. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders and bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Is there a motion for items fourteen A through E?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? Christina, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Item carries. Item fifteen, item fifteen A is our payment of the bills list from October twenty-sixth. Do we have a motion to approve the bills list?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? Christina, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Item carries. And item B is the transfer of twenty-twenty-two current appropriations. Do we have a motion to approve item fifteen B?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Christina, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Item carries. For item sixteen, we have no personnel items this evening. Item seventeen, Ron, do you have anything for an administrative report?
Just briefly, allergies has got the best of my voice, so I won't bore everybody with that. But yeah, the Solix group that we've hired to do the American Relief has done a very good job of putting a very detailed, rolled-out schedule for the month of November. We've got a couple of soft starts, if you will, to try it out, and then we're looking for the all blitz hard start sometime around the thirtieth of November. So it's moving along very well. As part of the all administration, I wanted to thank the Budget Committee for all your time you put in for the budget. I hope all of you got as much information as you were looking to seek out of it. It was a lot going on, and I hope you guys benefited from seeing every line item and all our department heads come in and talk about their processes and what they do. It's very intuitive that all our commissioners understand that and know how that budget gets to where it gets and all the work that we have to do now, as you can see, that we've got to do to get that budget down. I'll have the pleasure of this, I hope my voice keeps in, on Friday speaking at Project Self-Sufficiency for the kickoff of their Toys for Tots program. I'm looking very forward to that. And then rushing down right after that, joining Commissioner Fasano at the Chamber Awards Meeting. So that'll be the end of the week for that. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Tappan. County Council report. Katie, do you have anything for us this evening?
Not at this time.
You got it? Item nineteen, do we have any unfinished business this evening? Item twenty, do we have any new business this evening?
Just vote. I think you've already covered that, but that's new business every June and every November, is everyone's urge to vote. That's all.
Thank you. Item twenty-one is our second public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less regarding non-agenda topics. When you arrive at the microphone, please maintain a six-feet social distance with other attendees and state your name and municipality for the record. Is there a motion to open the floor for public comment this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Carney seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. And the floor is now open. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lisa Carlson. I live in Lafayette Township, but I am here this evening as a representative from the Sussex County Technical School Teachers Association. We are trying to get in touch with one or all of you to have a meeting with our association regarding concerns we have with our Board of Education.
I did get your email. I looked at it today. I was actually going to call you on the way, but I got caught up on another phone call.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to handle that?
Was, did I get that email?
No.
Josh Akins gave Lisa my email address.
Josh and I sit on the Lafayette Board together. He knows Commissioner Carney.
Something you want to maybe handle since you're liaison, too?
Absolutely. So I am the liaison to the Technical School.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to schedule a meeting, absolutely.
You and I know each other.
Yes.
You have his information?
I'm sure I can get it off the website.
If you can please just send me an email and we'll be more than happy to schedule that.
Sure, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Carlson.
Are there any other public comments this evening? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
Still moved.
Commissioner Carney moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Motion carries. Item twenty-two is our reminder, as always, please check the county's website, which is www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules, for the latest updates, and yes, for quite a plethora of job openings we have as well. And for item twenty-three, for our executive session resolution, I will hand it off to Christina to read into the record.
Okay, whereas the subject matters about to be discussed may be excluded from the public portion of the meeting by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners as an exception to the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B, and whereas it appears necessary for the Board of County Commissioners to discuss such matters in executive session, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex, in accordance with the provisions of NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B and NJSA ten colon four dash thirteen, that the Board at this time enter into an executive session from which the public shall be excluded, and be it further resolved that the general nature of the subjects to be discussed relate to the following items authorized by NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B as designated below. Number five, matters relating to the purchase, lease, of acquisition of real estate, of real property, or the investment of public funds, the Dennis Library, and number seven, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and the attorney-client privilege, personnel, ARPA, and lockburner matter. Be it further resolved that the deliberations conducted in closed session may be disclosed to the public upon the determination of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners, or provided by law that the public interest will no longer be served by such confidentiality, and be it further resolved that upon completion of the business for which the Board has entered into the executive session, the Board shall reconvene and resume its meeting upon the public?
The Board expects not to take.
And be it further resolved that the Board expects to not take formal action after returning from executive session except to adjourn the regular meeting.
Thank you, Christina. Is there a motion to adopt the executive session resolution and enter into executive session this evening?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Space seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. We'll now move into our executive session. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Get home safe. Thank you.